remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and all the blessings and opportunities it has brought us. Thank you for the abundance of blessings you have bestowed upon this great city. We pray that you will continue to bless our city, every resident who resides within its boundaries, and every employee who works to make our city great. Bless the children and all the young people in our city. Cover them and put a hedge of protection around them. Keep them safe from all harm. Bless this council and our city manager as we labor in the calling of public service. Give us wisdom, compassion, and love as we serve your people, and let all we do glorify and honor you. These and all other blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. The clerk will call the roll, please. Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigiel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Wynn?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame? Aye. The clerk will please read the resolution for the closed meeting. A resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the City of Norfolk held in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chambers. Thank you for coming out tonight. For those of you who do not regularly attend our council sessions, the process which we will follow this evening is the first thing we're going to do is take up the public hearings. We have a number of them tonight. At the conclusion of the public hearings, we'll move directly to the regular agenda. And there are 14 matters, regular agenda matters. And we will vote on all of those matters in just the way they are numbered on the printed docket. At the conclusion of the meeting, if any member of the public would like to address the council on non-agenda items, that's something that's not on our printed docket, you'll be given that opportunity. But all we ask is that you sign a slip of paper, which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began. So, the first thing, we'll then, we'll move directly to public hearing number one, please.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day on the application of Maplewood Plaza for an amendment to the city's future land use map within the general plan from single-family urban to commercial, for a change of zoning from R8 single-family and C1 limited commercial to conditional C2 corridor commercial district, and for a special exception for mixed uses on property located at 1402 through 1446 Church Street and 709 through 713 Washington Avenue. And by seven zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Howren is here to answer questions, if there are any. Okay, call the roll, please.
I have three ordinances for this. The first is an ordinance to amend the city's general plan so as to change the land use designation for properties located at 1402 to 1446 Church Street and 709 to 713 Washington Avenue from single-family urban to commercial. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
I have a question for the attorney. Mr. Howren's a client of our company. Is it best that I abstain?
You don't have to. This is a zoning that's not specifically applicable to your relationship. But if you had misgivings about it, you could...
That's why we pay you the big bucks.
You do not have to abstain.
Okay, aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
The second is an ordinance to rezone properties located at 1402 to 1446 Church Street and 709 to 713 Washington Avenue from R8 and C1 to conditional C2. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
And the third is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit mixed uses on properties located at 1402 to 1446 Church Street and 709 to 713 Washington Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing two, please.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day on the application of Charmar Trucking for an amendment to the city's future land use map within the general plan from single-family traditional to industrial, and for a change of zoning from R1, moderate-density multifamily and residential compatibility overlay district to conditional I1 limited industrial on property located at 1250 East Bramallton Avenue and 708 Cecilia Street. And by seven zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Okay. Karen Basanta is here to answer questions, if we have any. She's the proponent in the application. Okay. Or you can call the roll.
I have two ordinances. The first is an ordinance to amend the city's general plan so as to change the land use designation for properties located at 1250 East Bramallton Avenue and 708 Cecilia Street from single-family traditional to industrial. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
The second is an ordinance to rezone properties located at 1250 East Bramallton Avenue and 708 Cecilia Street from R1 and RCO to conditional I1. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing three, please.
Public hearing three scheduled for this day on the application of the City Planning Commission for a text amendment to the city's zoning ordinance to amend Section 2-3 definitions Table 6A, Table of Land Uses for Commercial Districts, 7A, Table of Land Uses for Industrial Districts, 10A for Special Purpose Districts, and Chapter 25, Special Exceptions to expand opportunities and amend criteria for kennels. And by seven zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. And I have an ordinance to amend Section 2-3 Tables 6A, 7A, and 10A and Section 25-10 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Norfolk so as to allow kennel as a special exception use in the C2 and C3 districts. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing four, please.
Public hearing four scheduled for this day on the application of Little Creek Marketplace for a text amendment to the city zoning ordinance to create the Little Creek Marketplace Localized Alternative Sign Overlay District and for a change of zoning to adopt the Little Creek Marketplace Localized Alternative Sign Overlay District on property located at 7862, 7530, and 7540 Tidewater Drive, 741 East Little Creek Road, and 7643 Sewell's Point Road. And Planning Commission recommends approval on a seven zero vote.
Mr. Beaman is here to answer questions, if we have any. Rob Beaman, you have a question?
Paul, I have a couple of questions. Well, I'll just kind of get it into one question.
Mr. Beaman?
When this store was presented, and don't get me wrong, everybody is very excited about the investment that's going in here and are excited about Sam's Club. But there was a presentation made to us that, from the Little Creek roadside of this, that it would not look like a box retail store. And based off of the pictures and the diagrams that have been sent to us, it is exactly that. It is a box store. I don't see any trees on the site plans, anything that kind of hides that side of the store. From the other side, it's great. From the Walmart side and from Tidewater Drive, it looks great. But on that side, it's not. And we were told that it was going to have some kind of unique design that will make it not look like the box store. So, I have concerns that there's no trees here. The same thing with the gas station pictures. I don't see trees around this. I know you want to advertise that they're there, but there's places to put trees that will not block the advertising, but will make it feel like it's there. And there is a void of trees in that area. Yes, sir. And we actually have our project architect and project engineer here who are hearing your comments. And we're happy to take those back to Walmart and Sam's Club and see if we might be able to dress up the site a little bit and present some plans that address your concerns.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, this vote tonight is not dependent on that?
No, it's signs. But if you look at the diagrams...
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. I just don't want this vote to give you latitude to do... Not do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha.
Go ahead. Sorry. I have two ordinances for this item, Mr. President. First is an ordinance to amend Chapter 11 of the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Norfolk, 1992, so as to create the Little Creek Marketplace Localized Alternative Sign Overlay District. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
The second is an ordinance to apply the Little Creek Marketplace Localized Alternative Sign Overlay District to properties located at 7862, 7530, 7540 Tidewater Drive, 741 East Little Creek Road, and 7643 Sewell's Point Road. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing five, please.
Public hearing five scheduled for this day on the application of CrossFit 757 for a change of zoning from I3 General Industrial to conditional I1 Limited Industrial District on property located at 1081 35th Street. And by seven zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right. Mr. Tom Slabota is here to answer questions, if any member of council has any. And Mr. John Weiss is here as a... Mr. Weiss, are you here, as a proponent? And John Small is here and has signed up as a proponent. Would anybody like to say anything? Okay. All right, thank you.
I have an ordinance to rezone property located at 1081 35th Street from I3 to conditional I1. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame? Can I ask one question? Does this change the ingress and egress from the property at all here? Does it not? Does... No, it doesn't?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor. This keeps the ingress and egress exactly as it is today.
Okay. All right. Aye. Where are we? Number six. Public hearing six, please.
Public hearing six scheduled for this day on the application of Simon Property Group for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of a portion of South Cape Henry Avenue from the City of Norfolk and Virginia Beach Corporate Limits. And by seven zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Royal, Randy, are you here? He's here to answer questions, if we have any. Okay, you can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance closing, vacating, and discontinuing a portion of South Cape Henry Avenue and authorizing the conveyance to the Economic Development Authority of the underlying fee of said property of South Cape Henry Avenue subject to the reservation of a utility and drainage easement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Okay. R1, please.
R1 is an ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment known as 5018 on property located at 5018 East Princess Anne Road. And this matter was passed by September 9 and October 14, Mr. President.
Okay.
And Planning Commission on a 401 vote recommends approval.
Okay. Who asked it to be passed by?
Their proponent.
Originally...
Has it been worked?
Mm-hmm. It's been worked out. They've got some modifications to their hours of serving alcohol, but it's been worked out.
Where is the applicant?
Right there.
Right there.
Okay.
All right. If you'll have a seat, I'll call you in just a second. But Diane Tally, Damian Wright, is here. Gabriel, it looks like Rappasardi, is here, is here. As in William Johnson and Haywood Cuffey have all indicated that they're proponents. But Mr. John Scott is here. Mr. Scott? Can we hear from you, please? If you'll give us your name and address, please.
John Scott, 5026 East Princess Anne Road. And I have some handouts to hand to the city clerk for each of you all.
Okay. You can go ahead. Please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I represent the Fox Hall Civic League. There you have in your hands a certificate from the State Corporation Commission showing that the Civic League is in good standing. Also, a letter signed by the president of the Civic League addressing the opinions of and the desires of the members of the Civic League voiced over three separate meetings we've had in the last six weeks. While I'm speaking, if you don't mind looking at just the bullets there, the rest of it is not significant. Just the bullets in the one-page letter. We'll call it the executive summary. The Civic League, the people in Civic League are family people with a serious concern about upgrading the neighborhood, minimizing crime, and the general safety of the families, the children, everyone in the vicinity. The city sent out a letter to residents and occupants, tenants, I guess owners, actually, owners of property and within 300 feet of the location of the applicant for the special exception for the ABC license. Well, that's just one football field length. It's not very far. But in that small radius of what is one of the largest geographic neighborhoods, Fox Hall and the city, which borders from Military Highway to the west side of Azalea Garden Road and all the way north to Robin Hood Road, south to the Marshes below Princess Anne Road. It's as big as some cities, some towns, at least. In any event, essentially, nobody really had noticed about the Planning Commission and their meeting to address the application for the ABC, a special exception for an ABC license. The Civic League itself was formerly comprised of some elderly people. And so, for one year, the Civic League had lapsed in renewing its standing with the State's Corporation Commission. We just paid the fee for that one year, $115, and they reinstated. So, the Civic League was essentially minimally, at least somewhat dormant, and basically a sleeping dog. In any event, the few residents that were within the 300 feet of the location got wind of what was going on and revived the Civic League. In that six-week period, it had three meetings, which probably is as many as they'd have in a year normally, to address this particular point that's before you all now. I personally don't have an agenda in this. I maintain neutrality. And I have also abstained from voting in the three different votes that have been taken. The votes that have been taken, the first one, the owner of the restaurant, 5018 Princess Anne Road, was not present, but the vote was unanimous and is objecting to this application. I personally invited him to come to the next meeting, which was three weeks later. He did. He addressed the people. And then another meeting, two weeks later, which was this past Saturday, again, he addressed the people. Each time, there was a vote taken. And each time, the plurality was, if not unanimous. The first one was unanimous. The other two were substantially against and voted to object to you all granting this special exception. The Planning Commission of the city did not have the benefit from hearing from the Civic League because at the time, it was dormant. So, there's nobody to step up and tell them anything. So, we have no problem with the Planning Commission, except that we didn't have voice with them at the time.
Mr. Scott, you're going to have to...
So, just in conclusion, the Civic League opposes for the reasons stated there in the letter from the president for this application.
What was the vote count?
Yeah.
How many people were at the meeting?
The last meeting?
Well, all three of them.
Well, on average, there were about 20 people. Sometimes a little more than 20. Of the three meetings, sometimes a little less than 20. And when I attended those meetings before, going back three or four years ago, there's like six people, including the officers, including myself. In any event, approximately 20 people. Last meeting was probably closer to 15 because it was the third one. I think people are getting tired of this. But in any event, or just had other plans. But in any event, there were three yes votes, meaning in support of it, everybody else in the last meeting, which we call the official count. It was taken by sealed bid, not sealed, but on cards, ballots, as opposed to a race, a show of hands. And there were three in favor, and everybody else was opposed.
So, there were less people at your meeting?
There were about 15 this last time.
I'm not finished my question.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
There are less people at your meeting than people who were notified in the 300-mile radius of letters that were sent out?
300 feet.
300... 300?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, there are probably... The number of people that reside within that period, that range is, I don't know, hundreds. There are... It's a high-density apartments, right around there. And there are some crime challenges and...
Okay. I get it.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thanks a lot. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Damian Wright, Mr. Wright?
Damian Wright, 5573... No, 5573 Brickell Road, Norfolk, Virginia. May I have some handouts?
Sure.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm here to request a, respectfully request a special exceptions letter from my establishment to do live music, poetry, comedy, and to sell alcohol. We followed all the procedures, rules, and regulations that was put in front of us. During the restaurant, we've made upgrades. We've made upgrades to the restaurants. And along the roads, we've planted trees, shrubbery, just to help beautify the area. The first meeting, it was recommended that I go out into the neighborhood and meet people, see what their reactions were, get in contact with the Civic League, and maybe talk to different Civic Leagues that was close by. So, what you have in front of you is myself and a couple of friends of mine walking through the neighborhood, through Fox Hall and the surrounding neighborhood. We have 64 letters that supports us and 42 signatures. And we have two letters from a nonprofit organization that we're working with. The second Civic League that we went to, the second Civic League meeting that they had, that I was invited to, the concerns that I got from the Civic League was the security, which I told them there was a security plan in place, and the operation of the cameras, if there were IP cameras, which we found out there were, and I addressed that back to the Civic League. The second concern was our hours. And with that came, I told them I would be happy to compromise. So, we came to the last city council meeting. I requested a continuance. That way, I could come up with a compromise with the Civic League. And as you can see, I've reduced my hours that I like to sell alcohol from Monday to Saturday from 4:00 p.m. to midnight, and Sundays from 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I've cut eight hours off my total time. And that's with keeping with restaurants that's about two to three miles away, you know, including TGIFs. They all close at midnight. Went to the Civic League meeting this past Saturday. They all voted no. I know the Civic League is pretty new. The new one, it's pretty new, and they're still getting established. But I feel that they didn't really represent the neighborhood as a whole. And most of the members in the Civic League was in that one shopping center. And directly in the middle of that shopping center is an off-premises establishment. It's an establishment that says "off-premises alcohol." I'm just looking forward to an opportunity to compete and be successful.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wright. Any questions?
I had about six questions listed. And I think that, as you stated, security was a concern.
Yes, ma'am.
My one question that I was really wanting to... Was there compromise between the parties? That is very important to me. And I listened to the Fox Civic League. And I'm looking at your proposal. And yes, your hours were changed as far as compromising. And that the league asked you to go back and go out into the community to find out the information that was needed to provide for us tonight and meeting with the various Civic Leagues and going out and meeting the people. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you. Diane Tally? Oh, did you have something?
Oh, no, they can...
Diane?
Good evening. I'm Diane Tally, 3021 Providence Road, Suffolk, Virginia. My business is Martin Florist, located at 5018 East Princess Anne Road. I have been there since I... I have not been the owner since 1976. The Martins opened up Martin Florist. But I have been the owner of Martin Florist for the past six years. We've been there since 1976. And I want you to know that in the past year, where Mr. Wright and Gabriel have... Gabriel's the landlord, Mr. Wright with the restaurant. I have seen more improvements in that section in one year than I have for almost 40 years that I've worked there. I have no disagreement with him selling alcohol. I have no disagreement with him selling alcohol. In fact, I have several people that are staying at the military highway motels that will come in and ask me where they can go to get a meal and get a glass of wine or get a drink, and I don't know where to tell them. And as for myself, I wouldn't mind sometimes when I want to wait out traffic going to Suffolk. I wouldn't mind going next door to eat, have a glass of wine and relax, and I have no, no, uh, complaints, no problems with them serving alcohol. They're good neighbors, and Mr. Gabriel, Gabriel is a good, is a good landlord. Like I said, he has done more improvements in one year than I have seen in the almost forty years that we have been operating there as Martin Florist.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gabriel Rappasardi?
Good evening, uh, my name's Gabriel Rappasardi, I'm the landlord at, uh, fifty-eighteen East Princess Anne Road. Uh, my address is three oh four Twilley Street, Norfolk, two-three-five oh three. I would like to start by saying, uh, please vote yes to Mr. Wright's special exception permit based on Mr. Wright's current record and current business practices, not on hypothetical situations. Allow Mr. Wright to compete, give him the opportunity to prove himself. Please base your decision on Mr. Wright's current reputation. The Foxhole neighborhood is stable because hands-on owners, tenants and residents like me made it that way. A security system and state-of-the-art cameras have been installed, accessible live online from a static IP address. All the residents of the building seventeen and all are excited and unanimously vote yes for Mr. Wright's restaurant. Uh, let's put Mr. Wright in the category of all the successful restaurants which serve alcohol, not the unsuccessful ones. The current Foxhole Civic League, I feel, does not accurately represent the community at Foxhole. Mr. Wright has still extensively tried to listen and work with them, taken them very seriously and given them tremendous respect without any in return. They are not being fair or reasonable and do not have any legitimate reasons to oppose this. In conclusion, Mr. Wright has an impeccable record and is a man of his word. He always does what he says. Mr. Wright has served all of us and our country for sixteen years. Let's give him the opportunity to compete and succeed in business. Thank you.
Thank you. Heywood Cuffy, Mr. Cuffy?
Hi, my name is Heywood Cuffy, I live at thirty-one twenty-three Oklahoma Avenue. Me being a resident of Foxhole, and I also joined the Foxhole Civic League to try to improve, to bring a positive thing to the neighborhood like Mr. Wright stated. We walked the neighborhood, we talked to the peoples of the neighborhood, and we all got positive feedback. And they wouldn't also have their establishment there, and I also had owned a business in Foxhole, which was very successful, and I just want to try to grant us this opportunity to be successful.
Thank you. William Johnson?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is William Johnson. I, I live in the Foxhole area. I live two blocks from his establishment.
You live at fifteen-thirty-two McNeil Avenue?
Yes, it's two blocks from where he, uh, opening up his business. I also own the car wash directly across in front of him, and I've had numerous people that are getting their cars washed that are looking for a place to eat, and there, there isn't any in the neighborhood. And, uh, as far as going out for entertainment, there's only one club in the area that's called Scandals, and it's really name right, Scandals. I mean, there's no place to go that would be a welcome entity to the, to the community. And as far as the civic league passing out flyers, I live two blocks from his business. I never got a invite to the civic league. So, I, I don't see a problem. I think it would be a great addition to the neighborhood myself.
All right, Mr. Johnson, thank you very much for coming down. All right, that concludes the list of folks who've signed up to speak. And if there are any comments or?
Yeah, um.
Mr. Riddick?
You know, I hate to be the, the, the one president on council that's concerned. At one time, I thought that we tried to keep these type businesses within a thousand feet of, uh, of residence. Bernard, is that right or am I incorrect?
Um, we, we do have some zoning that has distances and I can't remember the number.
We got rid of it.
Yeah, and, um, and this one is, this facility is going to be about three hundred feet from the, uh, the neighborhood, and as I mentioned earlier, uh, there's a church right across the street. I just believe that the neighborhood is too fragile. Years ago, we tried to get all the car, uh, car dealers off of Little Creek Road, and we tried to keep businesses like this, you know, within a safe distance from, um, the, the nearest house. And I can remember several, you know, that we, uh, we turned back. More than anything, I would like for this gentleman to be successful, but I don't believe that this type of business, selling alcohol, uh, would be the appropriate fit. Uh, I used to live across the street, across, um, Princess Anne Road on Hillendale Road years ago, and this restaurant at that time was Laura and Ervins, and I don't, and it was, and it was Laura and Ervins for several years, and I really don't know whether they sold alcohol or not. But my concern is the fact that it's so close to the neighborhood, and, uh, you know, based on that, I'm just, just concerned that one night, you know, twelve o'clock, somebody might have had one too many, and, uh, it creates a problem in the neighborhood. If it were anywhere else, you know, I would, you know, probably embrace it, but right here in the neighborhood, I, I just can't.
I just, um, want to say, you know, our country's made up and, and really runs off of small businesses, and corporate America has made it very difficult for small businesses to, um, exist. You look at grocery stores, hardware stores, ice cream stores, restaurants, they've all gone from being your locally-owned neighbor-owned, um, mom-and-pop-type businesses to some form of a corporate conglomerate or a franchise. And I just really wonder if perhaps it was some kind of franchise restaurant that was coming before us asking for an ABC license, would the reaction be the same? And I don't know of a restaurant, other than the Juice Bar we approved two weeks ago, that doesn't serve alcohol with its meals. Applebee's, the Max and Irma's in the Doubletree Hotel, Ruby Two's, um, several of the little restaurants that are up and down Military Highway, um, that serve beer and wine at the very least. And so, um, I, I think in order for them to be able to compete with the larger restaurants, that they have to be able to have the same offerings, and in order for them to have the same offerings, they have to be able to have the ability to serve alcohol. I do think it's commendable that you were able to compromise on the hours. Um, I think it's a bit much, but I'm a little liberal sometimes. But, um, if it works and it allows you to be able to be successful and to be competitive with corporate America as a small business, then, um, I am supportive because I, I just find it hard to believe that we would be having this conversation if it were, say, Pizza Hut or some other large franchise business that wanted to serve alcohol.
I just want to add that I think, um, the Civic League, the Foxhole Civic League has a great opportunity to form a partnership with a small, um, business owner, and I'm going to encourage you to do just that. If there are things in your community that you feel that a small business could help you with, I want you to go to Mr. Gabriel and Mr. Wright and ask that of them. I'm also going to encourage that you form that po- partnership that will have a great impact on your community, and when you do so, that there is um, consideration for compromise on both sides, um, as far as both parties are concerned. I'm looking at the hours that there was compromise on Mr. Wright's behalf to, um, adjust those, um, hours, and because it is an adjacent to the, the community. So, again, to the Foxhole Civic League, um, my encouragement is, and as well, Mr. Gabriel, Mr. Wright, that you get together amongst the residents, and you make your community the best community that you have, because now there is a possibility that you may have a small business in your community, and ask until the sky continues to be blue, and you may get what is needed for your community.
All right, thank you. Mr. Smigel?
Just had a question for Lenny and George, um, just for clarification reasons. We used to have a rule that, um, an ABC establishment cannot be within a hundred feet of residential, but I believe that that changed, and it started with the Chow Restaurant, um, on Colly Avenue, and then that ended up getting lifted. But you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's when it changed.
You're correct about that.
You're, you're, you're absolutely correct.
It started, started with Dirty Buffalo?
Yeah. And that area because, uh?
Yes, and Chow was the second one after that.
Because of?
A hundred feet or a thousand feet?
It's a hundred, it was a hundred.
It was a hundred. It was Dr. Wibley.
That was mine.
Right, and, and they're having a lot of success over in that area with new restaurants coming in.
I also want to piggyback on something that Mamie said, as far as the civic league is concerned. You all have a great resource with Onisia Howard, who is the neighborhood, um, resource person for your neighborhood, who has offered to help you get the word out about your civic league to the entire Foxhole community, and even involve students from some of our local universities that are willing to donate their time to help pass out flyers about the formulation or the reformulation of your civic league. And so, I too would like to encourage you to make use of the city resources that you have available to you and getting that information out to the entire neighborhood, because it is a large neighborhood and it does have a great span. But, um, if everybody is not aware and everybody's not involved, then everybody can't comment. And I commend you all for going out into the community and putting effort into getting us all these signatures.
Okay, thank you. You can call the roll, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
No.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Much has been said about this, but this process has always bothered me, that we as a city choose to make decisions on people before they've had a chance to prove themselves. And I would hope our resources could be better spent to make sure that our well-intentioned businesses do just as they've said they're going to do. So, I would hope that all of you here that have a, um, interest in this, let's work more to make this a success and make sure that we are enforcing those rules that we would want all our businesses to do. We, everybody should get a chance, and I hope you take advantage of that chance. I vote aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Thank you. R-two, please.
An ordinance to reordain Section twenty-nine dash sixty-eight of the Code of the City of Norfolk, Virginia, nineteen-seventy-nine, so as to authorize a permit process and standards of review for special events held on private property on a non-recurring basis, which are open to the public and involve either the provision of entertainment or the sale or service of alcoholic beverages to the public. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R-three?
An ordinance approving a right-of-entry permitting the authorized representatives of the United States of America to enter upon certain city-owned property located along the shores of the Chesapeake Bay in furtherance of a project for the construction, periodic renourishment and maintenance of the property.
Ellis James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Jones. My name is LSW James. I reside at twenty-twenty-one Kenlake Place here in the city of Norfolk. I, as I read R-three, I was puzzled. Could someone please tell me, um, representatives of the United States of America to enter upon certain city-owned property? That covers a lot of territory at the edge of the Chesapeake Bay. Are we talking about the Army Corps of Engineers? Are we talking about the Navy at the Little Inlet? Before I, as a councilperson, would want to vote, I would at least want to know exactly what this is alluding to, please.
Brian?
This is for sand replenishment, and it, um, I'm not sure the dimensions on the Ocean View Beach, Ellis, but the council's been given the description, uh, and the tracks, but we've been living with it. You're probably very familiar with the funding from the federal government to shore up our, our beaches and keep them maintained. This is, this is to allow a beach replenishment, uh, shoreline protection, so it's.
Okay, so, we're, we're talking here then about the replenishment of the beaches, not the changing of the dunes and so on?
Of course not. Yeah, yes, that's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro? Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R-four, please.
An ordinance granting a pedestrian commercial overlay district development certificate to permit the construction of an outdoor dining structure and to modify an existing freestanding sign at forty-one seventeen Granby Street, Suite A. Planning Commission recommends approval on seven-zero vote.
All right, and Mr. Basin, is that Alan Basin, is here to answer questions? Okay, thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R-five?
An ordinance approving the acceptance of a grant award of seven thousand five hundred dollars from the Hampton Roads Realtors Association's Smart Growth Program for the city's Better Block Program and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the grant funds. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R-six?
An ordinance approving the conveyance to the city of Norfolk by Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority of a certain parcel of property that is currently part of the Huntersville Two redevelopment project located at the northeast intersection of Church Street and Johnson Avenue, and authorizing the city manager to accept the deed on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R-seven?
An ordinance authorizing the purchase from Eleanor Williams Brown of certain property located at fourteen-fourteen Church Street in the city of Norfolk for the sum of twelve thousand dollars, and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of twelve thousand dollars to pay the purchase price. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R-eight?
An ordinance adopting a First Amendment to Land Disposition and Development Contract to correct the legal description contained in that certain land disposition and development contract with Howard and Construction Corporation for real property located on Church Street between Washington Avenue and Johnson Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R-nine?
An ordinance permitting Bon Secours de Paul Medical Center, Inc., to encroach into Kingsley Lane at one-fifty-five Kingsley Lane with a monument sign.
And Mr. Barry's here to answer any questions. Larry, nice to see you. Okay, thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R-ten?
A resolution supporting the Elizabeth River Trail Phase Four C-five project and requesting funding for such project in the amount of four hundred and forty thousand dollars through the FY twenty-sixteen Virginia Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternatives Program.
Ellis James? Ellis, you're, you're close to meddling now, Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Mr. Jones, my name is Ellis W. James. I reside at twenty-twenty-one Kenlake Place. I just wanted to indicate as a lifetime resident of this city, my support for this request, and I think it is important, although I live near the airport now, I did grow up on Powhatan Avenue, so I'm not that far away from all of the good work that, uh, the Elizabeth River Project, uh, has put in in so many ways for our city, so I think it's important for citizens to express their support for these kinds of environmental concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You can meddle anytime. Okay.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R-eleven?
An ordinance requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to establish projects for Terminal Boulevard pavement rehabilitation and citywide arterial ADA ramp improvements in accordance with the Programmatic Project Administration Agreement between the city and the Virginia Department of Transportation, and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the total sum of four million five hundred thousand dollars for these projects, subject to and in accordance with the terms and conditions of the aforementioned agreement.
Joe Cook?
Mayor Frame, member of the council, my name is Joe Cook. I live at eleven-forty-seven, sorry, Crescent. And I come tonight speaking in favor of R-eleven, because I think it's a matter of promoting the common good, especially the ADA ramps, uh, throughout the, the city for the disabled in our community. And I thought, I also know that Terminal Boulevard needs improvement, uh, as well, and, uh, hopefully that will divert, uh, more of the trucks that are now using Hampton Boulevard. They will now go down Terminal Boulevard, which is what it was originally made for. Likewise, uh, a matter that, uh, affects the common good in our city is the, the matter of the cold dust that, uh, my community and others, uh, especially, uh, Lambert Point and West Ken are subjected to, some ninety thousand pounds of that, which is spread out by the, uh, operations of Norfolk Southern there. Therefore, I come tonight, uh, letting you know about the community, another community meeting that we are having, uh, in Lambert Point on November sixth, uh, at the First Baptist Church there on Thirty-Eighth Street, to, uh, present an opportunity for you to hear firsthand from residents and answer their questions regarding the impact of cold dust on their health and neighborhoods. And, uh, we would like to especially invite the, uh, members of the council who represent that area. Mayor Frame, uh, you as a member of, of representing the whole residents of the city, Councilwoman Wibley, and, uh, Mr. Nguyen, uh, as well. I've talked to Mr. Smigel, who is, uh, unavailable that evening. Certainly would like to have him come, and invite all members of the council to come, uh, and, uh, and listen to the, uh, the neighborhood and, uh, about their concerns about this matter, so that hopefully you would act on the letter that Mr. Smigel has sent to you back in June, uh, June twenty-fifth, and I don't think any action's been taken on it yet, to, um, uh, mitigate the cold dust and get a, uh, health impact assessment from the State Health Department on those neighborhoods that are affected. Since that time, there've been about approximately thirty thousand pounds more of cold dust that has come into the neighborhoods there, and, uh, it's well documented, and I was going to leave you folks with a, uh, members of the council, with a copy of the, uh, re- letter, uh, inviting you to come to the meeting, and also a fact sheet on cold dust, that there is scientific evidence, well-established. Cold dust here is no different than it is in any place else in the country or the world. It contains arsenic, it contains mercury, it contains lead. All of those things are harmful to your health. All of those things are harmful to your health. So Mayor Frame, Councilwoman Whibley, and Mr. Nguyen, I especially hope that you will be there. Special invitation to you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, R11, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R12?
An ordinance granting St. James African Methodist Church Episcopal Church relief from real estate taxes on a parcel of real property located at 501 Dinwiddie Street for the tax year July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R13, please.
An ordinance to amend and reordain the city's operating budget for fiscal year 2015, to add $3,882,500 to the budget, to amend and reordain Sections 1 and 6 of Ordinance Number 45563, so as to appropriate and authorize the expenditure of the funds in the additional amount of $400,000 for Department of Police, $100,000 for outside agencies, $500,000 for Human Services, $500,000 for the Department of Public Works, $750,000 for recreation parks and open space, and $1,632,500 for Norfolk Public Schools, and to appropriate and reserve $1 million for the risk management reserve and $1 million for the economic downturn and leveling reserve. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Great, thank you. R14, please.
An ordinance to amend and reordain Sections 6.1-7A of the Code of the City of Norfolk, Virginia, 1979, so as to reduce the minimum lot size and setback requirements for properties which may be eligible to apply for a permit for the keeping of chickens and to increase the maximum number of chickens.
Okay. I know we have some friends here tonight, so, but we only have one person signed up to speak. Kayline, Kayleen Smith?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. Mr. Smigel may want to say something too, so.
My name's Kayleen Smith, and I reside at 9438 Willow Terrace in Norfolk, Virginia, 23503.